For Monday, October 4th, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board Meeting. Mr. Dolan?
Present.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Jezwicki?
Here.
Mr. Luise is absent. Ms. Britto? Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming is absent. Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here.
So move.
Second.
Uh, yeah, they were sent. They were sent.
Um, nothing substantial, just a, just a comment, more or less for maybe an FYI for the board. We're getting some legislation as far as, um, charging stations. And the board's going to be seeing that in different applications. It's regulated in the number of stations for parking spaces. But I'm just bringing it up that, you know, that's something the board's going to be seeing.
Nothing, sir.
Second.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a quick, quick question. I have no problem with the, uh, information in the document. What authority do we have? If we, do we vote on this or just review it?
Well, we're gonna have to, have to motion to vote on this. We haven't given power of saying, oh, do we vote or not?
I would just say in consultation with the, the township attorney, this is a, a soil ordinance that's on for second reading at the next council meeting. Uh, any issue would be related to any consistency or, uh, being, uh, not inconsistent with the, the master plan and whatever vernacular that our planner would utilize. It's, it's a land use ordinance, uh, uh, deemed so through a, uh, a court process.
Okay. So, uh.
And I believe he, okay, I'm sorry. That's, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I have been approached by board member before the hearing started, um, to talk about dredge material as defined in the draft ordinance. And what I would tell you is that the document in and of itself, um, is taken from the NJDEP regulations. It was submitted through the court and modified through the court specific to Jackson Township. But when we talk about dredge materials as defined in the, the ordinance, I would also note that there are other definitions that would sustain the use of dredge materials in Jackson Township. And those are the definitions for acceptable soil and fill. What is contaminated soil and fill? What is contaminated property? And then the permit application process, there is a section that requires a form to be filled out for acceptable soil fill material. There's a certification form that's necessary. So to the extent that someone from another location outside of Jackson wanted to bring dredged material to the town, it would either be deemed as contaminated soil and not permitted, or it would be deemed acceptable soil under the definitions that are in this new ordinance. And that process would go through what's noted on page four as the application form for acceptable soil fill material certification. So while it may not be linear, this chart, it may not flow readily, and it may not say that you can or can't do something. What it does do is it puts a process in place for someone who wants to bring material into the town to get it certified prior to that being permitted. So there is a process in place. And that being said, um, we would take, um, no exception to the board finding that it would be consistent, with the goals and purposes of our master plan, which is to make sure that we don't bring contaminated soil or fill into the municipality.
Sean, are you on? Are you on?
I thought so, but maybe not.
I couldn't hear you.
Or, I'm sorry, our slide, um, that the, the process is controlled by the, this new ordinance creates the process through the, uh, township engineer with the peers, appeals going directly to the governing body. But it's a land use ordinance, uh, first of all, because the court said so pursuant to the previous ordinance, but secondarily, because in fact, there is a master plan involved in maintaining the environmental, um, protection and sensitivity of the township.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? I, I just have one in that way, so. There's forms that need to be filled out and things need to be certified. What testing is, is done and how do we, you know, aside from, you know, just somebody filling out a form and a testing that, you know, it's not, that it's clean fill, what other safeguards are there?
Well, in terms of testing, um, in the definitions of acceptable soil or fill, they make direct reference to the NJDEP remediation standards. So they're in there. They just didn't print out four hundred odd pages of testing requirements. They just referenced the manual. So for those non-technical board members, all that stuff's in there by reference to the actual DEP standards, uh, NJAC 726D, the remediation standards. The forms themselves in the back do require a certification from the supplier of the material, the source of the material, and the person receiving the material. So the process would include a review by the township engineer through the township clerk's office.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could help maybe the, uh, uh, board planner, just if you look at bottom of page two, top of page three, permit required for deposit of acceptable soil fill material. So I'm going to go a little bit backwards. I'll point you to subsection B of page three, subsection, uh, B of section three also. So unless otherwise exempt, no permit shall be issued unless the applicant submits proof that the soil and fill material has been tested consistent with the applicable requirements of the ordinance and that the soil or fill meets the definition of acceptable soil or fill. And it also conforms generally with the chapter. And if you take that requirement and you kind of flip back to A as to what this board is, this board is charged to do, and I'm going to put this into the record. No person shall deposit or place soil or fill material or material or cause allow or permit soil fill to be placed on any property in the township of Jackson unless a permit is issued by the township and the engineer and other applicable county, state, or federal approvals. No permit under this chapter shall be required for any development that requires a land use approval from the planning board or zoning board, provided, and this is the key part also, for protection purposes, vis a vis the board. Provided the approval contains a condition that met the standards of this chapter and is so noted in any resolution of approval. So what does that mean for this board? And obviously the zoning board as well, is that moving forward, once this, uh, ordinance is adopted, this becomes sort of a, and you guys can help me out if I'm using the wrong language, becomes a checklist item and will be part of the entire review process. So you will come to learn as part of the review, uh, process, or at least through a resolution compliance, that in fact, the conditions of the ordinance and what type of soil or fill are utilized have been reviewed by, quite frankly, to at least two layers of the municipality. Both the township engineer for the permit itself and, um, as it, I'll just go on the read. As such, provided the land use applicant incorporates the requirements of the ordinance as part of their application. So it has to be as part of their application. And that approval is recommended by the respective board engineer. No additional permit would be required. But there is a stopgap. In other words, they have to first apply and then, as part of, I guess, ultimately, Mr. Klee, in this case, is, uh, his, his review letter, he's going to have a paragraph that says, I looked at what the township, um, uh, engineer did. I looked at the submit, submittal of the applicant, and I find that no additional permit would be required. And that then would be incorporated into, uh, the res, the resolution itself. So I think there's sufficient, from the board's perspective, in terms of master plan consistency, I, um, I think there's a, there's sufficient protections incorporated into the process, um, that during any particular application, since the applicants are required to submit this as part of their application, that individually, the board will have sufficient information to know, to ask the question to the individual applicant.
Okay, I, I just want to.
Friday long winded.
That's okay, I just want to read something to you that, you know, was a little concerning. And that is, if analytical testing was not conducted, justification for making the determination that the soil fill is acceptable without having analytical results, certification, signature from the soil fill supplier that the soil fill being imported meets the definition of acceptable soil slash fill. So it's, it's, I'm concerned that, you know, it's someone's work, that it's not being analyzed.
Mr. Chairman, just slightly different question, just from a procedural standpoint, and this is the class two administrative path. When did everyone receive the information? Was it, was it very recent?
It was in my packet. I received it Friday afternoon.
Friday, okay. So, okay, from, so from just an administrative standpoint, this is a fairly straightforward ordinance that is, okay, thank you. Designed and being compliant to the DEP guidance for this particular topic. Um, it's fairly straightforward for the folks that are in that world, but to, to the extent that the board has not had, uh, an opportunity to, to digest it and speak to the, the planners and have a proper resolution in whatever format you, you, you deem appropriate, this is part of a broader, more intricate land use process. And it, the, um, while it, the, the language is straightforward to the folks that are involved in this, 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 um, this industry, if the information, uh, was not able to be fully digested by the board, my suggestion would be to move it one meeting. Uh, the, the, uh, suggests that the council would move their, um, the hearing on the topic by one meeting. I just shifted one, so to the extent that you can have your questions answered, because you may have a, another question in addition. But my understanding is straightforward DEP, uh, guided ordinance language. Um, it's a process that the governing body wishes to conclude, but they also, from administrative standpoint, want to make sure the planning board's comfortable and has adequate time to review. Uh, in this case, it sounds like you had it and you had it over the weekend and, um, a, a little more time would probably, I think, address any outstanding questions. And in consultation with the township attorney, my understanding is that from sequencing, it's, it's not even too complete, but if it shifts and shifts and it's concluded within, um, within the next cycle, that would.
Okay, that sounds like a point.
Be sufficient, and then you may have additional questions, so you can have those answered too. Uh, Mr. Peters, any particular, uh, items you want to share with the chair of the board? Let us to this, and we would just want, in the future, we want to make sure that the information sent to you in more timely fashion from, from all the folks that are involved. We'll make sure that that happens on conversation with folks involved.
Yeah, between now and next meeting, I'll get together with the author and we'll make sure we're prepared to answer your questions in detail.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to carry this or?
I, I would, because the counter would. I would do a motion to carry because the council has, because it was probably announced that they were going to have it for second reading, and you'll have a basis to carry that.
That, that's correct. Yeah, so.
So can I get a motion to carry, um, this, uh, ordinance number two-two dash two-one, um, to our next meeting for, uh, discussion? And that is, uh.
October eighteenth.
October eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Jezwicki?
Yes.
Ms. Britto? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Folks have any questions, please address administratively or the planner, and that way, I'm sure it's straightforward and it could be added and, and, and addressed at the, the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
Okay. First applicant this evening, block four-eight-zero-one, lot twenty-four, Erman Family Investment LLC.
Yeah. Uh, I would, since, since he's here.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can we address the calendar? The next application on the agenda is twenty-eighth North Cooks Bridge Road.
Sure.
That's not available, ready to be presented tonight because, because of the Jewish holidays, the engineer couldn't get the plans done. So we need to carry that to a future date.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ms. Bono has a, uh, suggestion that this.
Our next statement will be December sixth.
December sixth?
That's fine, because he said he needed four weeks or so to do it. By the time we get it done, get it to your professionals, that works perfectly.
Okay, so that works for you?
Yes.
So, Miss, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, oh, you need the motion.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Can I get a motion to carry block eight-six-zero-one, lot forty-one, twenty-eighth North Cooks Bridge Road LLC to our December sixth, twenty-twenty-one meeting?
Second.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Jezwicki?
Yes.
Ms. Britto? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. Now for members of the public, blocks eight-six-zero-one, lot forty-one, twenty-eight North Cork Coast Bridge Road has been carried to the December, uh, sixth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board. Without the need of further notice, uh, the applicant has waived time.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Back to block four-eight-zero-one, lot twenty-four, Erman Family Investment Company LLC. Mr. Klee, you will, uh, lead us on.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, we heard some initial testimony, um, on, uh, June, uh, June seventh. It involves a contractor's warehouse facility. Uh, when the board first saw the application, we were looking at a hundred and thirty thousand, uh, six hundred square feet, uh, seven standalone buildings. We're now down to a hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred square feet in, um, six, six buildings. Um, I think the board's, uh, major concern was the, um, um, you know, access and or the main, um, circulation or access point of, of the project. Um, it's been modified to provide more of, I'll say, a conventional type connection to, um, uh, the county, um, roadway system, County Line Road. And they've also added another driveway adjacent to the, um, Easterly, uh, Easterly property line. And that shot, that was basically the revisions that they, um, uh, provided at the direction of the, of the board at the, uh, the June seventh meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a revised report dated September thirtieth. Property still located in highway commercial zone. This is a permitted use. We'd ask the, um, applicant to verify the new square footages for the buildings, both in office space and warehouse space, so we can get those right in the resolution the board may issue. That's it, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Board Salvatore Alfieri. On behalf of the applicant, as your professionals summarized, we were here on June seventh. At that time, we essentially had two parallel roads through the center of the site. There was concerns with how that access was structured, and there was also concerns with traffic, I mean, uh, circulation for emergency vehicles so that access could be provided. Since that time, our traffic engineer met with the county to make sure that the new design would be acceptable to the county, and you'll hear about that. And Mr. Murphy then redesigned the plans based upon your input and the county's input to what we believe addressed your biggest concerns.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I apologize, I should have announced this. Just so the record is clear, all members you see present tonight are eligible to vote. Either they were here for the last meeting, or they have certified that they have, uh, listened to the, the tape or the Zoom meeting.
Great, thank you. So, um, and when we were here in June, it was a virtual meeting, I believe, at least the public was virtual. So we did agree to re-notice, which we have done for tonight, um, as a live meeting. And having said that, um, we also presented at the last meeting, our traffic, our, our civil engineer, our traffic engineer, and our architect, many of the technical comments were addressed initially and aren't really changed as a result of the plan revisions. So we may gloss over some of the technical aspects and focus on the big picture of changes that were made. And then, of course, respond to any questions the public, the board, or the board professionals have. Uh, we are going to call all three witnesses again, um, starting with Mr. Murphy. Brian?
Fantastic, Mr. Murphy, you raised your right hand. You were previously sworn in this application?
I was.
So, uh, do you solemnly swear firm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you got to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You've previously been sworn and been qualified.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Murphy, uh, we're going to ask that A1, I believe it was, is the aerial be placed back up on the screen? And we have it also mounted. That was marked at the last meeting, uh, just so we can refresh the board's recollection as to where this property is located and what's surrounding it. Okay, Brian.
Okay. Uh, this is a Google Earth aerial shot of the property. The property is indicated in red, uh, and on the, uh, attached plan, roughly in the center plan. Uh, as you can see, we're on the north side of County Line Road. Uh, to the east of us is a self-storage facility in the rear, and then there's a county, county drainage facility, uh, also to the east. That's that large green area in front of the self-storage facility. Behind us, uh, there's vacant property that recently received the, uh, an approval, uh, by the zoning board. And to the west is a, um, pool company, uh, and his equipment, and, and he runs his business out of, out of that facility. Basically, the, the crux of where we're at, we're at and what surrounds us. We're going to have a new exhibit, it'll be exhibit A five. It's the updated, uh, site plan, and it is dated, last revised eight-twenty-six-twenty-one. And it is just a color rendering of the site plan that was submitted, uh, as part of the application.
Okay.
Uh, as, as Mr. Alfieri indicated, we, most of the revisions happen to the east side of the property. Uh, if you remember, pri, previously, we had four buildings along the east side. We've removed one of the buildings, um, so we're, we're down to three buildings on the east side. Uh, it's a reduction of eight thousand square feet in total. And, uh, for the record, uh, the new totals are one hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and square, square feet total, one hundred and eight thousand six hundred square feet of warehouse is, comprises that, and fourteen thousand square feet of office. Uh, we shifted the buildings, all three buildings further west to eliminate that double, um, roadway that we had. And that gave us more room in, in the rear of the buildings, uh, which provided us access to get an, an access road around the back. And we have a one-way access into the property off the county line. Uh, that's gonna, gonna be for trucks only. And so we met with the county, counties agreeable for that to be a one-way in access, not an, not an exit. Um, so the exit will remain in the center of the property, roughly. We also, remember, we, we had the trash enclosures in the front of these three buildings. We moved them to the back of the buildings. Uh, things, it's a safer and better condition to have them in the rear so that the trash truck is only in the back where the trucks are and not running through the parking lot where the vehicles are. That's really the, the main change to, 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 uh, the layout, uh, is the access into the property for the trucks, the circulation, and the reduction in the square footage of the building.
And Brian, have you placed the turning template on the plan to make sure that the fire trucks can circulate all the, surrounding all the buildings?
Yes, we have.
And it works?
Yes.
Okay, in terms of, um, the technical comments that were contained in both the engineer and planner's reports, are there any technical comments that you believe need to be addressed that might be a problem in satisfying the conditions or comments?
No, I think most of those comments were from, from the last, uh, letter as well, and I, I think we addressed all them in the last, last go around, I'm sure.
But if the board were to grant this approval, you would agree to address all of those as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's all we have, Mr. Chairman, unless anyone wants us to focus specifically on any of the comments that we, that we think we may have addressed previously.
Mr. Alfieri, uh, had you put a list of the requested waivers on the record at the last meeting?
We believe we did, yes, but if you want, we could run through them. Uh, my, my notes, it's four months ago, but my notes indicate that we, we addressed all the comments, but I can't say for sure. So if you want to make the record complete, we could do that.
They would behoove us.
Yeah, it's fine. Go ahead, Brian.
Sure. Uh, sidewalks and, and curbing along County Line Road, uh, we have curbing at the entrances, uh, just to basically solidify that the, uh, entrances were, um, coming into the property. Uh, we're not providing curbing or sidewalk along the remainder of the property. This is consistent with the rest of the properties, uh, up and down County Line Road, uh, the commercial facilities to, to our east and to our west. Uh, we discussed this, uh, last time as well. Um, the county is, is also good with this layout as, as well, um, that's been reviewed with them.
So I apologize, no curbing except for at the.
At the entrances. That's correct. And obviously, we'd have to pay into the. Um, loading spaces, uh, twelve by thirty-five is required for buildings over ten thousand square feet. Buildings two-hundred, four-hundred, and six-hundred, which are the three to the west, uh, those have smaller, uh, loading spaces. Again, I, I think the intent of that was obviously for a larger building, you could expect correct trailers. These are larger buildings, but it's broken up into smaller units. Um, so each of those units have, have a. larger buildings, but it's broken up into smaller units. So each of those units have a smaller loading bay of 12 by 25, which is really what we're going to be looking at box trucks advanced. So we really do meet the intent of the ordinance, but it's still technically a waiver. Curbing, six-foot curbing along perimeter parking areas, along 200, 400, and 600 building, that's the west side buildings, where we come up to the parking lot, basically, we're coming up to a curb area or a sidewalk area flush. We don't want to have a tripping hazard there. Ernie's letter last time requested that we provide bollards to affect that area, and we provided those, but it's still technically a waiver. 10-foot wide landscape islands at the end of each parking row. This is referring more to items for buildings 100, 300, and 500, which are the three to the east. We are providing it along the entry road, but I believe where they're referring to is up against the building. We have the parking area, the visitor and the worker parking, then we have van loading, and then work parking, van loading, and so forth. We have landscaping at the end of each one of those areas, but the overall area, we don't have it in the middle where we're providing basically concrete dividers between the loading area for the vans and the parking area for the workers. It's solely there for the production of those cars, you know, as loading vans are coming in and out. Obviously, we want to protect the worker cars. So we request a waiver for that. We are providing it at what's really the ends of those parking areas. And the last one is 10-foot wide, unbroken landscape strip along the side and rear property lines. Along the east side, we're providing basically street trees along the east side, but we already have trees in that area. And as I indicated, there's nothing really to buffer. We have the self-storage facility in the rear, and we have a drainage basin that's owned by the county. So we're requesting a waiver for that.
The other waiver was the buffer to the rear project that was approved by the zoning board. Did you comment on that?
Not yet. So Mr. Peters indicated in his letter, there's a 50-foot requirement for areas that are zoned residential. That is not a residential zone behind us. It doesn't talk about use. It talks about the zone. Even though it was approved for residential, it's not a residential zone, so we don't feel that we need a waiver.
But you've reviewed those plans that were approved?
I did, and they provided 50-foot buffer. The Board of Adjustment required them to have a 50-foot buffer to our property since there are residential use going in there up against.
Can you tell us generally what the buffer is along that common boundary line?
On our property?
Not designed or intended, but generally what the distance between the property line and the development along that common property line would be?
Generally, 15 to 20 feet on that area. That's the least along the northeast portion. As we go to the west, we have a bio-retention swale in that area that's all planted. And then further west, we have a buffer that's much more sizable that's going to remain untouched.
Thank you.
So we talked about the sidewalks. The adjoining properties don't have the sidewalks, am I correct?
That's correct.
And I agree with you. A lot of the roads in town, projects before were not built with sidewalks. Now we have more people in town. You have more people walking in areas. So would it be a problem to put those sidewalks in?
We could, but if we're looking at A1, I would think that they're somewhere that the town may find it better to put them simply because we have self-storage facility to the east. We have the drainage facility that the county owns to the east, and we have a nursing facility to the east, and then the CVS. To the west, we have a pool company, and then you have basically a wetland corridor that runs through that side as well. I just don't know what's ever going to walk there or connect to. I thought it might be better.
So what I'm saying is an increase in traffic. The pedestrian traffic and automobile traffic. So, you know, anyone that's walking along those roads that has nowhere to walk ends up on the shoulders.
So, yeah, so if the board requires sidewalks, the only thing is we'd have to go ask the county as well because they have jurisdiction over the street. But if that's what the board wants, instead of making a payment in lieu, we would request that the county approve it. If they do, we'll install them. If not, we'd have to make the payment.
I also think curbing would be protected because those are trucks, and they're big trucks. So a curb would be more protection even for people walking or driving. So I think curbing and sidewalks would be my choice. Now, may I ask a question about your plans here? I'm looking at the old ones, and I'm looking at the new ones. And in the back of the property, behind building 500, there appears to be a, is that a cement bumper area? What is that? Is it grass? Is it? I can't tell from my.
That's going to be a grass there.
Okay. Is there a possibility of making that the drive-on kind of grass? Because you've got trucks making that corner, possibly making that corner, and that type of product where the grass grows over the cement with holes in it?
I probably wouldn't want to do it for the whole thing, perhaps, you know?
Just that, just that?
Yeah, maybe like the last 10 feet of it or something.
Because there's going to be trucks making that corner. I think it's going to ruin the.
Sure. I mean, the turning radius works, but I take your point. So I don't think that's unreasonable to maybe the last 15 or 20 feet of that island to make that malleable and have it with a grass pavement.
Thank you.
I would also tend to agree with the curve in the sidewalk. You know, if someone were to put a house of worship along there, which wouldn't be unreasonable, you'd have to serve the pedestrian community. You know, we got to think about the future here. I'm not saying that you're wrong, but, you know, we can't see that far down the road. And I could tell you, there's a lot of pedestrians using the roads these days, and we do need to do something for them going forward.
A lot of the towns say, we use the same response, and their response is you have to start somewhere. So this might be where we're starting. Right, exactly. But again, it's county jurisdiction. So as long as we can get county approval, we'll make sure we include that in our application to the county.
Mr. Alphery, did I hear? I see the traffic guy out there. Sir, everyone will be given an opportunity. Your traffic expert, see?
Yes, yes. He'll be next.
Anybody?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Still us. Brian, we have brought up in our traffic portion of the review, the possible need for variance based upon type of units. Did we ever get any further with that in terms of what the statement of operations is or that particular design standard that might yield the need for variance? Our current report would be page 7B2.
For the parking?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking use, and that's.
So the parking, the new numbers, since we reduced the square footage. So 143 parking stalls are required. We have 196. It leaves in excess of 53. We're not really anticipating a lot of vehicles being here, being used. What Mr. Peters is referring to is the warehouse requirement is one for 1,500, and then one for each additional car that's associated or vehicle that's associated with the business, basically a delivery van or something along those lines. We're not anticipating a lot of that with the size buildings that we have here. I could see possibly on the buildings that run along the east, since they're larger units. So we have some additional parking sprinkled through those units, and then we have parking along the northern end. So we have the additional parking there. There was a reference of perhaps making some green parking. That may make sense for maybe the top 12 parking stalls along the north side. If the board would rather that.
From an enforcement perspective, we haven't answered the question.
Sure.
So until someone tells us that we will or won't have a unit, we won't be able to do the calculation to figure out whether relief is necessary.
Right. So the only way that could be handled, since we don't know who the tenants are going to be, is that as part of CO, each time someone has to submit the, how else can you do it? And we have to comply with the ordinance, so.
The zoning officer can't grant relief that the planning board has jurisdiction over. You have to have something that says you won't have that size unit, or that many units, or something to put you within. You have to do the calculation backwards. This is how many provided. This is how many units we can have.
53.
So that's the number. That calculation has to be put in the record so that you say, this is what we can handle on the property. This is the number of units we can create in the building. Otherwise, you have to come back to the board to get the waiver. I understand, sir, your point of what the zoning officer would do in a mixed-use warehouse was at some point, you're out of spaces. You can't rent the unit.
That's right.
So however you all want to craft, that's fine with us. But we have to have some specificity about what the total is or where the cutoff line is for permitted parking.
Okay. So Brian, can you specify based upon the information we have?
Sure. So it'd be 53 additional stalls is what's left over, which means that they would be able to have 53 company-associated vehicles.
Based on what square footage of each unit, or is that?
Based upon the entirety of the square footage?
On the project. For the site.
Mr. Campbell?
We're always looking, you know, in Jackson. We hope to look to the future as we've done with the pedestrian. And we've got two fairly new trends. The charging stations, which we're now going to have to start addressing every meeting, and the solar panel issue. You know, there's a lot of roof material there and no trees. So that would be an ideal location for some kind of solar project. Are you considering that within your plans?
We are providing EV charging stations on the site. Solars could certainly be something we could look into.
We're going to find out before we leave here.
This is, you know, we're trying to serve the public. We're also trying to serve the environment. These are things that will help move Jackson forward.
And we'll get you that answer. Also, I just wanted to refresh the board's recollection that we did agree as a condition of approval, if granted, that there will be no outdoor activity, no outdoor storage. The only outdoor activity would be the loading zones, obviously, because loading has to occur. And then the other thing is that the office space will be ancillary to the contractor warehouse use. We're not going to have an office, 14,000 square foot office. They're going to be ancillary to the various tenants. We all know the exact size of each component office until we get a user, but we just want to make it clear that they're ancillary. Were you going to add something, Brian?
We will provide solar.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Real quick, and we're back to the number of parking stalls. There is an excess, and I'm wondering, in front of buildings 100, 300, and 500, where we have these reduced aisles, it seems like, you know, lose two feet here or losing some parking spaces, you could make those islands comply. And if there's an excess, I don't really see a need, you know, or. Let's look at building 500. The island in front of the concrete pad, I'll call it the jelly bean. We always refer to it. It's, I see a four-foot radius and a four-foot radius. All right, so it gives you eight feet. Minimum's 10. So if you, and if there's an excess of parking, if you've got two feet there, two feet there, two feet, you lose two parking spaces, you can make those islands comply.
So, Mr. Murphy, just so the board is clear, obviously, as I perceive it, you disagree with Mr. Cle's presumption that you need a waiver in the first place? Is that?
I'm requesting a waiver just to cover us. No, I think.
All right. So, but that was respectfully, that was a yes or no question, just to kind of. So the answer to that was yes. You've requested the waiver, but you request it as a matter of just covering the record, so to speak, because you don't really agree that the waivers.
No, I think he's saying he meant we meet the intent of what the, we're not questioning the waivers required.
All right. So because the follow-up, really, just to highlight this, the chairman's point, is there appears, right, to be a simple fix, just adding those two feet, two or four parking spaces. So can you articulate at least, first of all, is there a safety concern to not meeting the ordinance requirement in your professional opinion? And presuming you articulate that it's your opinion, there's not, what is, is there engineering, and you're also a licensed planner, planning rationale to having the additional parking spaces instead of the two-foot additional radius?
In this particular instance, my concerns, really, might not apply. When I see an island that doesn't have the 10 feet, and there's right on the parking or, you know, just on it, then that tells me that, well, if you made the island comply, you're going to lose parking. Maybe you have too much building. When I always see an island that's below that, in this particular case, he has excess parking. So I would agree with him in this case, Mr. Murphy's assessment. But I'll still point out that if you lose two or three parking spaces, you can make the island comply.
We'll bring up our traffic expert, Scott.
Mr. Kinnell, did you previously testify in this application as well? Okay, so can you kindly raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And again, you've been previously sworn and qualified in this application.
Yes, and.
They're both out?
I do. Again, Scott Kinnell with McDonough and Ray Associates.
And Mr. Kinnell, you provided the original traffic report and supported this application and then supplemented that report by report dated September fourteenth. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And would you I know I at the beginning of the presentation, I indicated to the board that you met with the county. Can you describe what that that meeting was about and what the results of that meeting were?
Yes, on July second of this year, I met with John Ernst, the county engineer, and Mark Jenke, the county traffic engineer, to discuss the access system for this development and the discussions that we had at the prior hearing. And again, for a development that is sized, they typically, you know, the ordinance requires, you know, one two way driveway. When I explained to them the concerns by the board and the layout of this and the type of users, they were found acceptable to provide a second driveway that would be for ingress only. And and they understood in doing that, that helps to better facilitate truck movement into the site and throughout the site. So with that, Brian Murphy then amended the plan to what's been presented to us tonight. And as part of that, my office prepared a revised traffic study dated September fourteen, twenty twenty one. And consistent with the prior analysis, the site driveways will operate at excellent level of service. They'll operate a level service B for the peak periods. And we also had addressed the intersection of Huntington Drive and County Line Road that currently operates at a level service B and will continue to operate a level service B with this development fully built out.
And Scott, you heard the comments from the board about curbing and sidewalk on the on the county road. You you have no issue including that request in the app, the formal application to the county, do you?
I do not.
Otherwise, your since the square footage went down, your traffic report has no material change.
That's correct. I mean, generally, this site is expected to generate approximately fifty peak hour trips again during the peak AM and PM period. And that's really what the basis of our analysis, as you've heard on prior testimony, it's based on the highest sixty minute period.
And that's all we have of Mr. Kinnell, Mr. Chairman.
Questions? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Scott, real quick, Councilman Fleming had made a comment about access to the rear of the buildings for fire access. Could you just go through that quickly for us, please?
Well, again, the the current plan is before you provides full access around all six buildings. Well, five for the six, and then we have access to the two sides of building two hundred. This is consistent with, you know, other industrial sites and we provide positive onsite circulation. And it's my opinion that provides full access for emergency type vehicles.
Thank you. As Councilman Fleming had brought that up, I wanted to make sure we at least responded to it on the record. Thank you.
You're welcome. Excuse me?
Give a pointer with you? Could you just take me through, let's say, a tractor trailer is coming in? And that is the entrance that he would enter, correct?
That's correct.
And he has complete flow around everywhere, correct?
Correct. Down the center spine. In what we testified previously is that these three buildings on the west may have an infrequent tractor trailer delivery, but the internal design can accommodate tractor trailers on all all the aisles that have been provided on this plan. And again, the loading zones for the three buildings on east exist in these locations where a tractor trailer would back into those loading zones.
Now, I know our ordinance requires that the trash containers to be in the back of the buildings. So those three buildings that are lined up one hundred, three hundred and five hundred. If there was a garbage truck in the back and he's making his pickup, does it will a tractor trailer still be able to fit past it?
Well, again, these are these trash enclosures are far enough into the site. So should that happen simultaneously, there's enough room on the site for the tractor trailer to let the trash truck pick up the refuse and proceed. I mean, if he's between from this enclosure to the next, and there's a tractor trailer waiting to get through. After he addressed picks up the garbage air that if they pull on the side, a tractor trailer would be able to get by a trash truck that would wait to go to the next building so that they could pass through. But the key is is that, I mean, we have almost approximately two hundred feet from this trash enclosure to County Line Road.
So, you know, that is the single entrance, correct, for both tractor trailers and vehicles or parks?
Well, no, passenger vehicles will have access here as well. This is a two way driveway. We're going to try to encourage this to be primarily used for truck traffic. But that can be used, both driveways can be used for passenger vehicles as well.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
And we have we have our architect here, but the the architectural plans have not changed. We have them here in case you had questions. We showed you the typical view of the building. We could show you again to refresh everyone's memory. It was marked as A four, but it's Anthony doesn't have it. This is the exhibit that was marked last meeting, so we could just put it up. And and Mike, we're going to have to have you sworn in again.
That's A four, correct?
This is A four.
The rendering or whatever picture. Sir, you've also test you testified to the previous.
I didn't.
You've raised your right hand. Sow me swear affirm the information, questions, comments or testimony that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Just give us your full name and articulate the fact that you were proved as sworn and qualifications except.
Yeah, Mike Millman with Takarski Millman Architects. I gave testimony at the June seventh meeting.
Right. And at that meeting, we also had the the material boards that have been marked and they're on the screen if you want to see them as well. But Mike, that somewhat dark exhibit, all of the buildings are going to be the same material all sides. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, the materials did not change. The scale of the buildings changed in conformance with the site plan. Building that would be buildings one hundred, three hundred, five hundred increased in square footage. Roof height maintained the same height and all the materials on the exterior are the same.
And and again, all four sides, so someone behind the property is not going to see a less attractive design than in the front.
That's correct. Yeah, the material colors, the reveal joints in the in the exterior finish will be carried around the perimeter of the building.
All right. If if the board wants to see the material boards, we can bring them up if you need to see it.
Always.
Yeah, you want to see them?
Yes, please.
So Anthony, that was something we didn't we didn't mark it, but it was submitted early on in the process. And we may have to help. Now.
Yeah, yes, that's it.
A six, I believe. Can you identify what we're going to be looking at, Mike?
Yeah, this is just showing a sample illustration of the exterior finish. So it's a textured material resembling concrete or a stucco finish. So the idea is to use a combination of some of the earth tones that you see here in the in the illustration.
That's all we have unless you have questions.
Okay. Anyone up here? Questions? No, everybody good. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to a public comment. Anyone who cares to speak about this application can step up to the microphone.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm John Conway.
Thank you. If you raise your right hand, if you can.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I was holding my cane in my right hand.
If it's possible. So, sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address?
Sure. John Conway, C O N W A Y. I live at five Marlboro, M A R L B O R O U G H Court in Jackson. I'm one of the residents in Four Seasons at South Knolls. We're eight hundred and eighty three homes. We're the development just south of County Line Road, just south of the development that we're talking about. And if you could put up the picture that shows County Line Road and the property that would that would help with with my first questions. For those of you who haven't been on County Line Road lately, County Line Road is a divided highway. It's divided by a raised berm. You cannot cross. Well, you could if you had a Jeep or a high vehicle, but it's divided by a raised berm. It's designed not to cross. Not that one. The next one, please. There you go. In between. There you go. This wasn't going to be my first question, but the fire department is just west of Huntington Drive, which is the double lines to the south of this chart. For the fire department to reach the entry point to this development, they would have to cross from the west side of the road onto the or from the east side of the road onto the westbound traffic on County Line Road to reach the entrance to this development. Because I don't think the fire trucks can cross over that berm. I don't know for sure, but I don't think that they can do that. The traffic signals on County Line Road are at Huntington Drive, which is where I go through, and so do the eight hundred and eighty three of my closest friends every day as our primary entrance and exit to the community. You can't make a U turn on Huntington Drive. Well, it's illegal to make a U turn. You can do it, and lots of people do, but it's illegal. The next place you can make a U turn on Huntington Drive, if you're going west, is at the fire department. It's also illegal. The next place you can make a U turn is further up the road at the next light, which is actually a jug handle U turn. If you're going east on County Line Road, the place you make a U turn is at Harmony and Cook's Bridge. If any of you have been there, Harmony and Cook's Bridge is speed limit forty miles an hour. And you have to look way over your left shoulder across two lanes of traffic and jump into the left hand lane at a very short light in order to make a left hand turn. And that's the only way you can gain access into this division. So you're very limited on those short lights to gain access into this subdivision. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer.
All right, can I can I?
Sure.
Right there, Mr. Kinnell, can you come up? So this board has had previous applications. I'm going to try to parse your question a little bit. If I get it wrong, trying to help, but I apologize. So I'm going to ask it slightly differently, but out of respect. Have you studied any of the jug handles and whether or not they can take tractor trailer traffic? Because I guess if I'm getting.
Well, let me let me phrase it a little differently.
That's fine.
Just getting into South Knolls, we have to dodge the red light runners making the left turns at these jug handles because people don't want to stop and wait.
So.
Making the left turns into our subdivision, people don't want to stop and wait.
So you may have more.
We're we're going to add some more traffic to that.
So you kind of get the gist, I think, of what gentleman's getting at. Why don't you try to address?
Yes, I mean, our our office, my office has done numerous traffic studies along this section of County Line Road. I'm very familiar with the jug handle U turns to the west. And there is more than adequate capacity to accommodate this development. Very familiar with the intersection to the east at Harmony Road and the jug handle that has been designed to accommodate large wheelbase vehicles. Again, it's important to recognize that, yes, there will be tractor trailers, but not expected to be a high number of tractor trailers serving this site because of the size of the tenant users here. This this is not a logistics or or warehouse distribution facility. This is geared towards contractors that have smaller tenants, that have smaller storage areas. So again, the the expected number of trucks, in my opinion, can be accommodated on the local roadways from a geometric standpoint and from a capacity standpoint.
Can you also address the fire access issue to the best of your ability?
I would expect that this site would be served from the fire department, no different than the self storage facility just to the east to the sunrise at Jackson facility, the convalescent home, where they'll have to go east to Harmony Road and make a U turn at that jug handle and access the site. The fact that they have, it's it's an emergency, they'll have their lights and sirens on will help facilitate them to be processed through those intersections more efficiently. But this is no different from other developments, whether it's commercial or residential that are on divided roadways where U turns have to be used to access sites for emergency reasons.
But there's more. Coming off of one ninety five from the west, where we've had major accidents, you have to jump off if you don't want to use the jug handles. You have to jump off and go across the one lane of traffic at Jackson Mills on the high. And make that left hand turn to get onto Harmony Drive. So we're just creating these numerous places where you can create more traffic accidents, where we just put in fifty new homes in Four Seasons at House at South Knolls, where we didn't do anything to.
didn't do anything to fix the traffic lights, coming out of Huntington Drive, because we're a Level B, where we've just been building homes and building homes in Four Seasons in South Knolls, and now it's two changes of the lights at Huntington Drive already. But now we're going to put in a whole new unit, but the traffic never changes. It's always the same. I, I just, I don't understand why the traffic never changes. And now my second, well, I guess we could talk more about traffic, well, sure, but... As far as your experiences at Huntington Drive and County Line Road and the operational aspects of the traffic signal, if there are issues there, then that is, then you have to make a request to Ocean County to evaluate that. Again, all the, the signal operations, the timings, the, the lane geometry, that's all approved by Ocean County. If there are issues where it need to be addressed, then either through Jackson Township or a resident can make a request and make them aware of an issue that may be occurring there. And then they'll do an evaluation. But I can tell you from my observations, this intersection is operating very efficiently. We rate an intersection A to F, typically designed from C to D, and the, and this intersection is operating level service B during the peak hour periods.
The, excuse me. The, the second thing that I wanted to speak to is, South Knolls decided three or four years ago that we build wildflowers. We did away with a whole bunch of trees, and we had covenants put in that said we wouldn't grade away from the wetlands that were adjacent to wildflowers. And the covenant said no grading. But then grading happened, and the water got diverted away from the wetlands, and now, excuse me, the wetlands are gone. Now we're taking a beautiful wooded lot, as you saw from the first slide here, which does away with a lot of CO2 in the environment, puts a lot of oxygen back into the, back into the, into the environment. And we want to build warehouses and solar panels, and drain all the water onto the highway systems and goodness knows where, instead of putting it back into the ground. And we talk about, boy, this is great for the environment. Now, I'm not a huge environmentalist, but I'm kind of losing sight on where we're saving the environment for the good of solar panels. And I guess that's just a, you know, a throw aside comment. But we used to like save the trees, and now we're saving the solar panels. And I'm, I'm losing sight of where that's beneficial.
Well, just, just to respond briefly, property owners can develop...
Property owners can develop their property, and they have every right to do it.
And there's stormwater management regulations in place, both from the state and the township that deal with the drainage that we have to address.
I understand. I understand. That was, you know, just a, an aside comment, but, you know, I'm more for saving the trees and the solar panels.
Well, sir, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think we're trying to use solar panels to try to offset some of the development that is, is going on. You know, it, it does help. Every little bit helps.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
And as Mr. Alferi said, you know, the owner of that property has the right to...
Oh, I understand. I understand. Thank you. Yeah, just, just watch the plans, the final plant plan this time, better than the final plant plan for wildflowers. Thank you.
Anyone else here to comment? Seeing no one, I'd like to close public comment.
Move to close public comment.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Alferi, couple things, housekeeping. As you know, this is a wooded lot, and I would like some type of timeframe of development. We have a number of different properties in that area that were clear-cut, you know, and, and nothing ever happened, or, you know, people got approvals and never moved on. So I would like to know a timeline of when this is going to start, when you guys are going to go in there with the bulldozers and start clearing. I don't want any more scars in, in Jackson.
You got to come closer.
I'll get, since I don't, I never put a shovel in the ground in my life.
While you're getting your answer, Mr. Cleese, can you address this ti, we've had this discussion before, this timing question, just a, maybe there's a bot, there's a bonding issue with this to protect the town, or Mr., Mr. Peters?
It's always a problem when we, as soon as the developer gets his, you know, approval, gavel goes down, he gets his map signed, the lot gets cleared. And then usually, it's happened where then there's no, there's no movement, there's no, no development. And as Mr. Houdak indicated, it winds up with some scars in the, in the areas, vacant lot, nothing, you know, you know, appearing to be built. Perhaps some type of bonding, reforestation. So if it sits for a certain amount of time, there's money in place to, to reforest.
Right. We, we, the suggestion, first of all, it's going to be six months to a year by time, by the time we get outside agency approvals and then get building permit plans into the building department. But we could post what's called a restoration bond, that if there's inactivity over a certain period of time, there'll be bond money available to replant. If then, that's really what happened if we're going to abandon the project, which is unless, it's not likely unless the, the economy crashes, and then all bets are off.
And that's all fine and well, but, you know, you're saying six months to a year, and, you know, I don't want to see bulldozers out there tomorrow and having to look at this scarred piece of earth for a year before anything happens. And that's what, that's what we're...
We would agree that we're, we're not going to do any land disturbance until we're, we've met, satisfied all the conditions of approval, obtained all the outside agency approvals, and then are ready to start. Then we would, then we would start disturbance.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I'm...
And a bond.
And a bond.
And a restoration.
Yep. Okay. Any closing?
That's all I have. No, thank you for all your time. I think we've attempted to address the major concerns from the last meeting, and I believe we've addressed all the technical comments, and we'd request a positive vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I do want to commend the builders because we did ask that you change plans, and, and that was a, a big process. And I think that if we can all work together in this manner, where we asked that the project be changed for the benefit of the town, I was very pleased to see what you came back with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just as you would deliberate, so the two specific waiver questions that, just for authorship purposes, I appreciate some clarity, is whether or not the board does in fact want the recommendation for curb and sidewalk. I heard a consensus that it does. Okay, so that makes that one easy. And then the second issue is whether or not you want, you want to follow Mr. Cleese's general contention, I guess is the nice, best way to put it, to not grant the waiver for the, for that drive aisles, the eight to 10 feet, or if you believe that, or you take heed in the applicant's testimony that while they could meet the ordinance requirements, that this is a, in their argument is this is a better overall design, it provides for additional parking and the like, and it does, it is in fact a safe, you know, safe design. But that's totally, the board has to make a determination. So the one is off the table. I got that consensus, but the second one...
Can we move, can we vote on the first option or second option?
I think the better thing to do respectfully would be to just discuss it and come to some consensus and include it.
I, I respect Mr. Cleese always, you know, his care for our situation. However, on the, under these circumstances, I, I think this looks like a, a good plan, and it provides plenty of parking and safe parking, which is our concern.
Mr. Chairman?
I just have a question. All at once, or...
Yeah, all site work at once. Yes, all site work at once.
Mr. Chairman, just on, on the issue of the, of the islands, with your friend, as it's a term of about dying on this hill, and I'm not going to die on this hill. If this was a, a retail center where the square footage and the parking were close, then you could say, well, maybe you're just reaching for too much. In this particular case, I'm not going to die on this hill.
And we just want to clarify on the sidewalks and curbing, subject to county approval, because again, we all have controllers.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay. Anyone here to make a motion?
I'll make the motion as Mr. Lee.
Chairman, just one more issue. I think the applicant agreed that solar will be provided.
Solar, the EVs, yes.
How much solar, and how is that approval condition carried through to the actual building? We'll have assigned plans, and there could be a note on the drawing, all buildings will be provided with rooftop solar. And if that's enough, then that, that's fine. I'm just thinking down the road, if there's not something in, on the plan somewhere that I don't, I don't think the applicant would misrepresent the board.
Well, that's a good point. I mean, they put up one panel. Okay, there you go. Yes, I think it should be declined.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not designed, it's going to be difficult to define the extent of the solar until we get a solar consultant in and...
So this is what I would respectfully request on that, that the, that the board take the applicant at its word as a condition of approval, that it will provide solar opportunity either through rooftops, over parking, or both, and that for simply administrative approval, so that the, no need for further notice or the like, but for administrative approval, once it's fully designed, they come back just for that issue, so that the board has an understanding of what was able to be designed.
Okay, and we've, you've dealt the, the, the administrative process and some other types of applications that have been involved, and that's fair.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second, right?
Correct. Mr. Dolan?
With the conditions that we discussed tonight, yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Jezwicki?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I?
Approval to the zerg.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn?
You too.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done. Thank you, everyone.